Can you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and good evening. Tonight is Tuesday, December 10th. It's a little after 7:30. We just came from executive session where we were discussing police department personnel appointments and boards and commissions. The first item on our agenda is a resolution considering a modification to the planned unit development extension for 900 King Street LLC.
Whereas on January 26, 2021, the Board of Trustees approved a local law amending Chapter 50 of the Village Code. And whereas the local law revised the Village of Rybrook zoning code pursuant to the planned unit development sites and created a new section of the law to allow the redevelopment of 900 King Street by 900 King Associates for age-restricted senior housing. And whereas on September 14, 2021, the Board of Trustees approved the PUD or the Planned Unit Development Site Plan proposed to the site for age restriction of 62 years of age of older, a senior living facility with a total of 231 residential units, rental units consisting of 126 independent living units, 85 assisted living units, and 20 townhomes, and other related infrastructure including driveways, walkways, garages, surface parking, site lighting, signage, and stormwater. And whereas under the Village Code, the site plan approval is valid for a period of 18 months with extensions authorized to be granted in periods not to exceed six months. And whereas the original PUD approved by the Village Board of Trustees expired on March 13, 2023. And then the Village Board then provided an extension until September 15, 2023. And then the Board approved another extension for a period of three months upon the filing of a properly completed application by the applicant to the Westchester County IDA. Within the three-month extension period, there shall be further PUD site approval extension for an additional three months. And whereas since the property owners of 900 King Street filed an application with the County IDA, it was then extended until September 15, 2024. And whereas in a letter dated September 9, 2024, the property owner asked the Village Board to consider another site plan extension. And whereas on September 24, the Board approved a six-month extension with the following conditions: One, submission of monthly progress reports. Two, progress meeting with 900 King Associates and Sunrise Representatives, including the principals, before January 14, 2025. And three, submission of an updated application to the ARB by the end of 2024. And whereas in a letter dated December 5, 2024, counsel for the contract vendee of the property requested a further six-month extension and indicated an intention to present minor modifications to the approved PUD site plan. And whereas at the December 10, 2024, meeting, the Board of Trustees, Sunrise Senior Living, as contract vendee for the property, presented the proposed modification to the PUD site plan and an intention to file a formal application for such modifications, including further processing with the ARB. Now therefore be resolved that full after full consideration, including the forthcoming application for an approved approval of an amended PUD site plan. And recognizing the lack of any material change in the property, the relevant laws and project of the Village Board of Trustees hereby grants a six-month extension from March 15, 2025 to September 15, 2025, to maintain the status quo while the forthcoming application is processed on the condition that the monthly progress report shall be submitted to the Village Administrator until such time as an application for amended PUD site plan is submitted to the Village. And be it further resolved that conditions set forth in this resolution shall supersede those conditions set forth in the resolution approved by the Board on September 24, 2024.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
Second.
We'll get it straight eventually.
And I believe we have representatives of 900 King Street, so please, floor is yours.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the Board of Trustees. David Steinmetz from the law firm of Zarin and Steinmetz. David Steinmetz from the law firm of Zarin and Steinmetz. Pleased to be back before your board this evening, this evening representing Sunrise Senior Living and 900 King Street Property. I'm joined tonight by our project architect Stuart Lacks from Perkins Eastman, my colleague Vincent Padone, Anthony Nester from JMC. And the good news is, I'm joined tonight by my client Clyde McGraw from Sunrise. The bad news is, I told Clyde, no problem. Fly into Westchester County Airport. It'll be easy. Quick ride up here. I have him come up today. Westchester closes. Fog.
Oh, no.
It's unusual.
Just to demonstrate to the Village of Rybrook how important it was, Clyde made sure he got to Newark, even though that got delayed. He rented a car and he got here, so.
Yay. Thank you.
Will this be an example of a client billing the attorney?
We'll talk about that later. Sunrise, as I think, and I hope all of you know, Sunrise is one of the largest and one of the most preeminent providers of senior care in our country. Assisted living, independent living, and memory care. And I'm excited they're here. They're excited to be here as the contract vendee of 900 King Street. Many of you, including on our team, have lived through this project for a number of years. Clyde and I are obviously newer to it, but very pleased to now be a part of this site. And I'm pretty confident that as we go through this and as ultimately this building is built and occupied, you will be pleased that you now have Sunrise here in the community. This is a previously approved project. You've already heard on the resolution. The good news is, we are not here. The project is not getting bigger, as some of you heard me say. Previously, the project is getting better. It is actually getting a little bit smaller. There are some minor tweaks that are being contemplated and proposed. We're going to talk about some of those this evening. The good news is, the building remains. There is no change in the roof height. There is no change in the density. The concept remains the same. These are almost indiscernible changes, but Stuart will bring them all to life. We're going to walk you through that. We're also here, as Chris read in the resolution, requesting an extension of the approvals. We know we have a process that we have to go through. We are completing some of the review. Nothing, I should say, for the benefit of the Board and obviously for the benefit of the public, nothing has yet been filed formally. We are working on that as a team. We expect to be able to do that shortly. We've conferred with Chris, with Ralph and Jennifer. We know the process that we're about to conduct in front of your board, the planning board, the architectural review board. And I'm actually also pleased to say I've already engaged with Leslie Snyder on behalf of the Arbers. My understanding is the president of the Arbers may have walked in. Mr. Barnett, I'm sorry I didn't have a chance to meet you, but Leslie did tell me that you would be here this evening. So we fully intend to engage with Mr. Barnett, with Leslie, and the Arbers once we have an application in and we know our final design. So we're here tonight really to do a very brief explanation of what we're about to consider filing. Elicit any reactions. We want you to understand where we are in the process. And again, we do hope that you will... There was a motion in a second, but you all did not vote on that extension.
Correct.
Correct.
So on behalf of Sunrise, we have read the resolution. We have no objections. We do hope you will consider granting that extension and permitting Sunrise to do what it does well.
Thank you.
Stuart?
Thank you. Thank you, David. Members of the Board, Stuart Lacks, Perkins... Stuart Lacks, yeah. Stuart Lacks, Perkins Eastman, architect for the project. Pleasure to be back before the Board. It's been a while on this project. Just sort of the agenda. I guess I'll just go quickly through a couple of slides. This is the site plan as the Board of Trustees approved it in August of 2021. Based on some comments as we were after the Board of Trustees approval, we were before the ARB. We had a series of meetings, both formal and informal, to receive some feedback from the ARB at the time. This was in approximately November of 2021 when we... When our client paused the project, this is where we were. Some minor tweaks. And now I'll go through and sort of talk about the changes that Sunrise has asked us to explore. First of which is a slight reduction in the overall square footage of the project. Really just a tightening in. I'm not sure how well it reads on the screen, but the red lines represent a sort of inboarding of the perimeter of the building, the footprint. We're looking for ways to take some square footage out that increase the overall efficiency. We're also going to talk about really 11 things overall, as you can see, four for the independent living building, three on the assisted living building, and then another four that's sort of just in general the site. And I'll quickly go through the numbers. As I said, first one is just reduce the overall building footprint. Number two is, we would like to proceed, or Sunrise would like to proceed, with the entry drive cul-de-sac as approved by the Board of Trustees. The ARB had asked us to contemplate a different configuration. Sunrise likes what the Board of Trustees likes. There, we're looking at, based on Sunrise's program for the building, some changes to the landscaping on the internal courtyard. That's number three. Sort of upper section of the H. And then four, add additional balconies to the apartments around the perimeter. There had been a combination of some balconies in the front, some Juliet balconies, as we call them, that's sort of the appearance of a railing, but you actually can't walk out. Sunrise would like to see more balconies in the apartments. That's for the independent living building. The assisted living building, keynote number five, again, reduce the overall square footage. And then number six, sort of just rework the port-cochere for the assisted living building and the entry sequence. And then again, add some porches, balconies to the apartments within the assisted living building. Then the last four things, just in general, there's a one-story piece. That's sort of roughly square where I've got the number eight between the two buildings. That's a one-story over kitchens and dining room and back-of-house space. For at Sunrise's request, we're looking at adding some sort of outdoor amenity that's both to increase the amenity options for the residents as well as a little bit more pleasing visual for the apartments that look over that space. In the back, sort of the section nine, there's a... At the moment, the approved plan shows a sort of large degree of asphalt parking spaces and some asphalt for loading and trash pickup and things like that. And they've asked us to look at reconfiguring that to provide a little bit better visual, obviously, the opposite side of the entry for the independent, the assisted living, and then the units that look over it. So reconfiguring that, keeping the number of parking spaces, keeping the loading, but just changing the shape. And then the last two things, 10 and 11, just again, visuals for the residents is that we've got a trash collection area and a generator, and they'd like to have some sort of structure on that to, you know, more visually appealing. And just to look at it another way, we've started looking at, you know, just at this point, just some hand sketches, exploring the ideas. And I'll just bring this up. The same keynotes, just sort of pointing out where that are. You get a little bit better idea of the reconfiguration at the parking. That's probably the, I think, one of the more bigger visual impacts. And that's really it.
I have a quick question. I just have a quick question. Number eight, are those little putting greens?
It's a thought. Without making any commitments, it was, hey, could we put a putting green up there?
That's phenomenal.
We think so, too. One of our designers thought it'd be a great option for a putting green. We're not totally committed to it yet. I didn't want to necessarily flag that, but yes, you've got a great idea.
Well, you sold me.
That's a hardscape roof before.
Correct, yes.
And it's one floor. You should mention that it's one floor.
Yeah, that's a one-story space. And that was, in the previous plan, that was not contemplated as any... It wasn't really, I wouldn't even call it a hardscape roof because there was no public access to it. That was just a plain roof with some... There still will be some mechanical equipment.
But it was visible for units.
It was visible from units looking down, and so it's trying to find a more attractive.
That makes sense.
So none of this is, as we said, has been, none of these changes have been finalized. We wanted to share this with you. And I should say, as we learned from staff, the Architectural Review Board never issued a final determination on the project. We know that, so we know we're going to have to complete that as part of our process.
Great, thank you. And we appreciate you coming tonight. Clyde, especially you coming to see us tonight. And, you know, and I have to say, you know, as you're going through your presentation there, we said, you know, that was originally approved in August of 2021. And so it just shows, you know, that we've been sitting here a long time, kind of waiting for some action. And I, for one, am very pleased to see this moving forward again. That, you know, to see, to see the IDA application and to see, you know, to know that applications to the planning board and the ARB are forthcoming. You know, this is, you know, a good sign of things to come. We're very pleased to have Sunrise involved now. I know we've had a number of meetings. And, you know, just seeing action here when there has been none for a long time is, I think, a positive for the Village of Rybrook. And so, you know, I, for one, am happy to vote on this. Other questions, comments from the Board? I'm certainly going to open this up to the Board.
I have a question.
Please.
Hi. So in terms of number four, the balconies. So originally, it was Juliet balconies because they, I guess, they didn't... They were just more for like an aesthetic way to look, and they didn't want actually people going out there. Now you're putting in more balconies. Are those going to be ones that people actually will go and sit on? Or are those going to be more of the Juliet balconies?
No, they will be real balconies that those apartments, those apartment tenants can go out and use and sit out on their balcony.
Okay. So is there going to be, are you doing away with the Juliet balconies?
This would be instead of the Juliet.
Instead of. So now there's no more Juliet balconies. There's just going to be these balconies.
That's it. Yeah. And again, we haven't fully baked all this, but that's the intent, yes.
Okay.
And if I could just touch on that, too. So at least the preliminary plans we've seen so far, like these, they're tightening in the building so that the balcony, the furthest part of the balcony is still within the original footprint, right?
We think so.
On the preliminary plan. Until, on the preliminary designs.
Yes. And we're also cognizant of, you know, where we are in terms of coverage limits and things like that. And so that's sort of all part of our calculations, that we've got to recalculate that. And there's an absolute number that we can't cross.
Right. And also, I feel like we had a lot of time, I think with the plans, and again, it's going back a couple of years. But I feel like we had like a visual, like at eye level, of what the people see in regards to like the Arbers. And I'm not sure if it was the apartments in the back or if it was from the top of the building. But maybe that's something also you can show us, maybe from the top balcony, what the visual would be towards the Arbers.
Yeah, because I think the things that, if I'm recalling correctly, the things we presented were the other way. It was the view from the Arbers and their balcony.
Right, that's what, right, right.
Right. And how it compared to the existing building.
Like, yeah, how, like, what's their visual going to be? And what's the visual of the people on the balcony also? And also from the front. In other words, the visual.
Right.
Yeah, the elevations.
Right, elevations.
But we are, and I guess I should say, you know, Anthony and JMC and Perkins Eastman are still with the project. We understand the history that has gone on to get us certainly to August and to today. And we have communicated that to Sunrise and understand the sensitivities of the town and the Arbers.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
I, for one, am very glad to see a reversion of the port-cochere back to the original proposal. I hope I will never use that phrase again. I've never used it before, and I see no reason to ever use that phrase again. But I think it's much more visually impressive, and I think it's a lot more functional than what the ARB had proposed.
You agree, and you pronounced it pretty well, too.
He's practicing. He's a cultured man.
Quick question. Does Sunrise have any projects going on in the media area right now?
Yes, so JMC and our firm were involved in the process in the Village of Tarrytown. We secured a rezoning site plan and special permits. That project is fully approved. They are looking at other potential locations in the county. And they do have one other location in southern Westchester, I think, in the Fleetwood area.
Fleetwood and in Crestwood.
And Crestwood.
That is under review?
No, those are built and occupied.
Okay. So where is that?
Oh, there's one in Fleetwood and then one in Crestwood.
Crestwood.
How long did those take to be finished, once they began?
From a construction standpoint?
Yes.
To be honest, they were both built probably 20 years ago.
Oh, so it's a new thing.
So no recent one.
So do you have any current projects in Westchester?
Yes, the project in Tarrytown was approved and is now going through proofing. So we've not started construction on that one yet.
Okay.
So the two buildings that have been in Westchester County are Fleetwood and Crestwood. They're both existing.
20 years ago.
About 20 years ago.
Okay, so the new one is my...
Would be in Tarrytown.
And when he said, when he uses the phrase permitting, he means building permit issuance. It is fully approved and permitted by the Board of Trustees and the planning board in Tarrytown.
Okay, so I just want to better understand timing. So it's not going to be a problem to handle those projects simultaneously?
No, we typically build four or five projects every year.
So these will be going simultaneously?
Potentially, yes.
Yeah.
Mayor, can I, you want me to kind of walk through the steps that we have going forward?
Please.
So the next steps that we have is, once an application is submitted, it has to go through some staff review as well. But it'll go to the planning board as the approval authority for PUD site plan modifications. So they're the approval authority that will review and will consider the site plan amendment. The Village Board, though, is still lead agency for seeker purposes. So the Village Board will be looking at any seeker impacts of the modifications that are coming before them. So for instance, if there was a finding statement and things like that that had to be modified as a result, that's what would be considered by the Village Board and any impacts of those changes on the finding statement. And then the last, the other step is the Architecture Review Board, which, as you mentioned, is still in play, that has not reached, that didn't reach a finality from the prior approval.
And there are, there is a public hearing along the way in that process. Public is aware.
Correct.
Yes, right, in both planning and ARB. Any other questions or comments from the Board?
I have a question. Does the roof that's being finished, does that affect finished space? Is that in the calculation, or how does that get worked into the plan?
No, exterior space is not considered part of the building area, so it doesn't affect that number.
Great. Any other questions or comments?
No.
All right. Well, we appreciate you coming to, you know, coming before us and everyone being here. We certainly appreciate the ongoing conversations with the Arbers, and we look forward to seeing more progress. I think, you know, I think I can speak for the Board that we're excited that, you know, of the pace at which this is really picking up, which, you know, we're excited to see movement here. All right, well, we already have a motion and a second. Let's call a roll.
Trustee Epstein?
I just have one other thing I want to say, if I could.
Please.
I know that you are new to this. Welcome. And I think it's great that the Arbers has been involved in this for a long time, as has the Village. And I, for one, would love to see that there's communication between the two, so I really would love that to happen. So not contingent on my vote, I just want to say that because I think it's really important, and I hope you'll do that going forward because it wasn't the case before.
Trustee Epstein, just so you know, I affirmatively reached out to Leslie, whom I know quite well, and made sure she knew my firm and I were involved. And we've had some email exchanges about getting together once we get into this process.
Great, because good neighbors are very important to us.
Also, the school. The school should be notified during the start, you know, when things are going to get crazy and all that, right?
Nothing's going to get crazy with this out.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. Okay, I'm sorry about that, Mayor.
And I would, you know, I would open this up to if there is public comment. I think, Dan, you may have something.
Hello.
Hello.
It's been a long time. This project started in 2016. We are excited about the change that has occurred with Sunrise taking over, also having a new law firm that's involved, and the ability to reset the communication that was sort of lacking and had become decently confrontational. It's been many years since we've been here. You know, we all do know that there is importance to the Village for having tax revenue and a functional property. We can't keep looking at an empty office building. Sometimes we look in and thinking about, oh, I saw that on a commercial for the lottery, but otherwise it serves no purpose. We do understand that. But, you know, the Arbers is obviously the most affected party here. And we still have concerns that through the process, we had constructive conversations with the developer that quickly sort of devolved into our concerns being sort of pushed to the side. And there are, there's approvals here that the Village has done. We understand that. That's not what we're here to discuss. But there are specifics that occur to the nature of this property, the nature of sharing an entranceway, the nature of having, you know, your residents and ours commingling in that space that we want to sit down with you and discuss and collaborate with you so that, you know, this project goes forward without objection, further objection from us. But also, so if you were there for the next 100 years, that we're good neighbors to each other as, quite frankly, we were with 900 King Street when it functioned as an office building and as we have been for the school. So, you know, we did get your message. Leslie reached out to me and I said that we would be happy to set something up. Not necessarily with the entire Arbers Board. I don't need you to subject you to that, but... Yeah, well, no, it's just a lot of different personalities. But we do have a 900 King Street Committee. Fred, who's been an original owner over there, sits on that committee, and they've been advising us. But, you know, we, this was surprising to us, too, to be back here. So having the opportunity to talk to you and figure out what our positions are. And the person who ran 900 King Street Committee for us has been deceased for three years. So to put it how long this project has been going for. So we need to sit down as well and have some discussion. We had sent a letter to you to oppose the six-month extension, not because we are opposed to the moving of the project, but because this has been pushed and pushed and pushed. And what we don't want to see is a race to approve a project, but then have them sit down and wait because the financing is incorrect. So I don't know what the status of 99 White Plains Road in Tarrytown. I only know that address because it's literally across the street from Leslie's office. And I know that that was approved in March 1, 2023, and nothing has occurred there. Now, I understand for everyone, financing has been an issue and rates do are coming down. But, you know, pushing through to get approval. This project in some way had, was proved, it will be approved in some way. That's not the question here. But making sure that we do this in a way that's going to be good for everyone, I think, is what we're looking for. And, you know, we want to make sure that things like in the last three years, that there hasn't been changes to traffic and other things that traffic's nice from 2016. You know, I'm assuming you guys have done your own environmental, not environmental, economic impact statements, or else you wouldn't have bought the property. You know, but since we started this discussion, Lake Street has opened up in Harrison. You have SUNY Purchase, which is completely functional and operational at this point. And so making sure that this is truly going to meet the needs because putting my residents through a construction project that doesn't have occupancy and we are then facing what happens after that is literally our worst-case scenario for us as a community. We're looking for a successful neighbor so that we're never up here discussing this again. And that's going to be our goal going forward. And that's why we had asked for not approving the six-month extension, maybe doing something less to make sure that their feet are being kept to the fire so that they're continuously in communication, not only with us but with you guys, and not having this go another six months, another six months, another six months, and pushing this further and further off so that we are in the same status quo we've been in for the last nine years. And, you know, that's what we're trying to avoid. So I will leave it to that. The only thing I will say, just because you brought up balconies, the concern I would have with them being livable balconies, meaning you can go outside and sit on them, is balconies tend to have things, when they're Juliet balconies, they're for show. But when they are balcony balconies, like when I had, when I lived in Fort Leaning in the city, we use them. We put stuff out there. We put decorations out there. And when they're on the fourth floor and the third floor, they become visible to everyone who's driving up and down Arbor Drive. I don't really care so much about the hutch, but, you know, or to King Street. So making sure that the units that would be visible maybe have alterations to the... So, making sure that the units that would be visible maybe have alterations to those balconies so that we're not seeing people's clothes in the wind as we drive up Arbor Drive is what we wanted to, you know, we want to make sure that we're looking for those things. So, you know, but if I were living in a senior facility, I'd want to have a balcony. I'm not opposed to... We just want to make sure that we're, you know, having these sort of conversations.
No clothes?
Thank you. I think you have a little time to go before you're living in a sixty-two and over facility. No, and, and we appreciate the comments and certainly we appreciate the applicant working with the Arbers, you know, I, and, you know, again, on my behalf, I'm, I'm glad to see movement again on this project, and I'm assuming that you've done your homework and know, know what you're getting yourself into, so.
Great, sorry about that. I held you up before when you were...
Oh, yeah, no other, other comments, questions? All right, I think we're ready for the roll.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Iser?
Yes.
Trustee Marino?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Chris outlined next steps, so we look forward to seeing that.
All right, we'll see you soon. Yes, and safe travels. Yes.
Yeah, hopefully the fog lifts.
It is really convenient.
Just don't use attorney-stylen met as your travel agent.
Yeah, it does. This was an aberration.
It usually is great, especially right to here. All right, moving on to our second resolution, this would be a resolution for possibly license and fee modification, a modification of license and fee schedule for camp programs.
Okay, so we just have a draft of a resolution if the Board ends up making any changes to any of the fee schedules, and it simply says now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees approves the following license and fee schedule changes for the camp programs. And there's just a listing of all the current fees that are adopted in our Village budget and what's in our current license and fee schedule. So, there's been a discussion with the Board about the camps. It's been in the last, I think, two meetings of the Village Board, and we've tried to provide a lot of information that we've, you know, put on the website as well so everyone can look and see, you know, about enrollment of the programs, locations, week-by-week enrollment, programs, where they go for the travel camp and the day camp, all different costs, our expenses, our revenues, you know, we always try to be very transparent and let everybody know so we can have a discussion. We think, you know, we're, we're proud of what we do, but that we also always look forward to make sure we're meeting, you know, what the residents are, are looking for in terms of our programs. And also with us tonight is Rob Bertolacci, our Superintendent of Parks and Recreation, who also could be a resource for the Board's discussion.
Thank you, Chris. So, I'm going to hold off on a motion and a second at this point.
Yeah, there's nothing...
There's really nothing to act upon right now. Just for the public's knowledge, this was a discussion item at our last meeting, and it really started as a discussion of fees mostly. It switched to a little bit of a discussion of location. Just as a bit of history, in the past, we have approached the school about the potential of using that location, but we never really came to any agreement. A lot of times it was either, you know, not available or, you know, we thought it would probably be more expensive than we would want it to be.
More than what we have now. More than what we have now.
More than what we have now. We have had a very long-term positive relationship with Crawford or the Town of Rye for the use of Crawford. In no way, shape, or form does this reflect on the Town of Rye or Crawford Park. We find that. We've had this great relationship and we want that to continue. We appreciate everything that the Town of Rye has done for us. We did reach out to the school about the possibility. It doesn't seem like the school would be a possibility for this summer. We certainly appreciate the, the school looking into this, getting back to us in a timely fashion and, and opening the conversation. You know, this really isn't a public hearing. Obviously, I'm going to open this up to public comment. I know that this is, you know, a, a topic that, that people care about. I mean, it's, you know, it's what we're doing for our residents and for our children. And, you know, at this point, I would say, you know, certainly for 2025, we do not, as a Village, anticipate making any material changes to the summer camp or the way that it's operating. We certainly are looking to continue the discussion about fee structure. There's a lot of information that Chris has provided to the Board that's also available to the public, as he mentioned, and we, we encourage people to look at that. And I think at this point, I'll, I'll probably just open it up to comments. Are there any comments from the Board first before we open it up or do we want to start with?
Let's start with the outside comments.
All right, so I'll, I'll just go in order of, you know, what's on my list here, and that way there's kind of, instead of everyone just raising hands, and if there's someone who's on the list who doesn't want to speak, just say you don't want to speak and that, and that's fine. But the first one is Catherine Dabari is the first I have. Please.
Thank you, Catherine Dabari. I live at 11 Elm Hill Drive. I've had two children who have attended the town camp, one of them who still does, and I haven't had any problem. They've had a wonderful time. But I wanted to come here today because, and I haven't unfortunately read all the information that you have posted online, but I have seen some things, seen comments and stuff, postings on Facebook because it's become a bit of a conversation in the community, and it's with regard to the space. Now, the space is extremely convenient for me, so I'm not saying I don't think it's a good space, but people are talking about safety in terms of the, it being too hot for their children and, and needing to have a, a cool space, which, you know, I definitely agree with, but I wanted to come here and raise something else, something that I was concerned about last year. There was talk amongst the kids about somebody, a stranger, walking around, taking photographs of the children, and I, my son came home on that Friday. He wanted me to pick him up. Normally, he can just walk home, and he told me about it, and I, I went and spoke to the camp director. She handled it very well. She said that there was talk and there was somebody, they had noticed somebody and they'd called the police and they'd, you know, circled the area. But the reason I wanted to come here today was because it is a public space. They can't ask people not to go to the park. So, I think about like the heat, but from a safety perspective, how can we make it safer for our children in a public space or public environment like the park? So, that was my one thing with regard to that. And then the other thing I wanted to mention is, you know, as a town, as a community, I've done a lot of work with, just as a parent of a child with special education needs, and our school is, and they do provide extended school year, and what that means is, it's for those kids who are in special education, it's to make sure that they can still have those services over the summers that they don't regress. It doesn't mean they have to, you know, improve, but it means they stay at the same level. And I know that you've been in healthy conversation with the school, but I think in the past, these services were held in conjunction with the town so that these children who had to have additional educational services could then also take advantage of all the wonderful activities at camp. So, I would really love to try and understand more about the conversation with the school. I'd also love to understand more about what their costing entails, where they come up with this number, and I would also like to understand, I mean, I know this is something we can essentially ask the Board, the, the, the School Board, but I would love to understand why camp isn't possible at the school next year, like, or, or for this summer. Again, like I said, it doesn't really impact me as an individual, but I am thinking of the community and the children as a whole. So, and I would be very glad to help in any discussion or anything that was involved. I have reached out to the Rec Department. They know about my interest in understanding more. And also from the perspective of like making it a smoothly-run camp, if there are children, and it should be accessible to all, if there are children who maybe need support and aid or whatever, you know, if, as a community, we can make sure that happens because it means that it's less disruption for the camp, parents aren't being called to pick up their kids, you know, these, a lot of the people who are camp counselors are just, you know, young students and who aren't necessarily qualified to support some of these kids who might need additional support. So, I would definitely be a proponent of, you know, working with the school, making it a really great environment and, and something that really the town can be very proud of. And not saying that it's not good now. It is. My kids love it, but I'm just thinking for the greater community.
Were they in day camp or travel camp?
Um, so, both. My younger son and my older son was in day camp, but he, my older son has aged out and he did, last year, he did travel camp and he did a week, uh, two weeks of travel camp this past summer, or this summer, yeah.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Next on my list is Judy Klein. Want to say anything or no? Okay. Taylor? Okay. Dan, anything on camp?
Wow.
I'm not speaking on behalf of the Arbers, obviously.
On a camp?
So, I saw online, I used to be the Director for Clarkstown Parks, Park and Recreation Camps, that's Clarkstown Schools, for the middle school camp, which, and then we had to go to the high school my last two years because of construction at the middle school. I was a counselor before I was an Assistant Director and a Camp Director when I was seventeen. Became an Assistant Director when I was eighteen and was the Director when I was nineteen.
You're hired.
No, I don't, I don't even teach anymore.
Yeah, that would be great.
You know, I, I looked at my old camp. It's down to a six-week camp. They still operate out of the schools. Obviously, we have Drummond's Pool, which is the, makes it much easier, but they're operating full-day camp out of the schools for eighteen hundred dollars, including trips, sixteen-something without the trips, six weeks, eight-thirty to five-thirty. The half-day programs are like four hundred and fifty dollars for six weeks. They're, they don't cost very much. It provided opportunity, obviously, for the town kids to have jobs, and from what I understood, it provided revenue for the schools because the schools were heating and air conditioning the buildings. And so, I don't, and I know you're not the School Board, but I don't understand what the disconnect is, that this is a very common scenario almost everywhere except for here. And, you know, I, I don't, Crawford Park is one of those places that is, is lovely to have. We do soccer there, and I'm honestly always uncomfortable when I go to pick up my child from, especially last year when it was the, the Red Bull that was running it. The amount of people that were coming in and out of that camp who were bringing, you know, dogs, taking them off leashes, were cycling through with a bunch of kids who I could tell they're not local residents. I don't care, but I would care if I wasn't with my children during the day and instead the camp was being set up there where someone else was in charge of watching my child. And I think there's a fundamental difference when I take my kids to the park and my focus is on my own children first when I'm a camp counselor, if I put my hat on, or even when I was, you know, teaching, and you have eighteen, seventeen kids and two teenagers watching them, the likelihood of someone or something happening at a public park like that is concerning in today's world. And so, you can't control what the school does, but I'm not really understanding that sort of disconnect. And I think it would be, and Clarkstown Parks, Park and Recreation still serves as a really important lifeline for not only some people who can't afford to go to the Briesmont Camps and the Sleepaway Camps, which I can only afford to do because my wife works at those camps and is a director at those camps, and so they pay for those camps. Otherwise, there would be no way I could do that. But I would have kids who came and we did an extended camp for two weeks after, an additional two weeks. I usually was the Director for that camp as well, and, you know, it provided people either coming back from soccer camp, a two-week soccer camp, and then they're going to lacrosse camp, you know, two weeks later, and they don't know what to do with themselves. They would have a place for their kids to go that was affordable. So, finding some way to gain the access to the school, not only somewhat of the increased safety that the school provides, but quite frankly, the increased amenities that the school provides. I was able to bring in pool tables, knock hockey sets and other things that you just can't have at Crawford Park unless you have the ability to put it into that main room and lock it up, but we had ability to then run a functional camp during rainy days because I had gyms, I had the cafeteria, and I can rework those common large areas. Yes, I used an art room, but, and the nurse's room, but that was it, and an office for myself. All the rest of the classrooms, and in some years, they said, listen, we're doing work. We need to reorient where you are in the building. We, we worked with the school. And so, I know I'm having this conversation with the wrong group of people, but, you know, I, I'm more than willing to have conversations with them as well because I'm, I'm just not understanding how this works for every, every municipality except for Rybrook. And if they're only charging a thousand dollars, it doesn't take much more with a hundred seventy-five kids to pay whatever the school is going to be requesting to make it worth their while because that is much cheaper than a lot of the other programs that I'm aware of because we were charging seven-fifty when I left in 2003. So, you know, it's pretty expensive to say we're fifteen, sixteen hundred dollars now. So, you know, I, I don't know if any pressure could be put on them. I understand that they're a separate entity, but I'd be happy if you let me know. I'm happy to have conversations with them as well, but my experience is of what we used to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was very helpful.
And if I could, if I could just say a few things, and then I'll continue down the list here. I would, I would say first off that we've been running this camp at Crawford Park since 1979, that this, this has been going on a very long time. There has never been an incident as far as I know.
It's not a, we, we've, good, we get very good feedback on safety.
Yeah. I will say that. Good, we do surveys, but, so, yeah, survey, survey troubles me, safety troubles me because I think we try really hard to try to, create a safe environment. We know it's a park, so there's potential for somebody, you know, to walk through the park and, and that, but at the same time, we try very hard to be, you know, we know these are the most important people in our lives. These are children and we want to protect them, so.
I would...
I don't want to give any impression that it's not safe, and we do try to survey the residents back and after the meeting, the programs and say, did you feel safe? We ask one of the questions we ask in our survey every year, and the vast majority, we, you know, we give very high marks on those ends. So, you know, that's, we try very hard, but it is a public park and we understand that too.
I would also say that both of my children have attended the camp, the camps, plural, and I've never had any issues. They've always felt very comfortable. They've always felt very safe there. You know, I think, you know, and I would also say that over the course of my now twenty-six year-plus cur, or since I've graduated college, so even more than that, I've been a camp director many years and in public settings many years, in public parks many years, and I've never had any issues there as well. I currently, we were, you know, we oversee six camps right now in public parks and that go on every summer, and we get all kinds of visitors at those parks, and again, I, I deem them to be safe spaces. Yes, they're public parks. The public is allowed there, but that's why we have staff, that's why we have counselors to, to look out for that.
Can I comment a couple? And, and Dan, you're, you're right, the majority of the camps are definitely run at schools. So, you know, we, we do survey that out. So, you know, we, we do survey that out. There are other municipalities that run them in parks or parks and schools in, in some places as well. So it is a variety. It's kind of what assets are available in your community. Uh, and while, as the mayor said, we're very pleased that Croft, they've, the town has given us Crawford at no charge, which keeps our rates down. Um, at the same time, schools do offer something that they can offer there, which is protection from the weather, protection from, uh, the heat, the, you know, storms, um, there's classroom spaces nice to have or gym spaces nice to have. So we are interested in pursuing that for the long term. There's no doubt about that. And that we did reach out to the school and the school, to be fair, and, um, you know, the school, this is pretty short notice getting ready, but they, um, some of the reasons, which we put in the backup for tonight's agenda, so you guys can see exactly what, what was said, I'll just kind of summarize if that's okay. I think it's, it's good to say, but this particular summer, they said they're doing, um, you know, during the eight-week summer period is there when they do their larger-scale maintenance and repairs. This upcoming summer, what they're planning on is refinishing the classroom doors, which is going to use the, they need to put them into the gym space, and that's where they're staging for their sanding, staining and applying the polyurethane. And then they're going to use the upper gym for staging, cleaning and drying classroom, uh, classroom rugs. Uh, they're doing other staging in the other gym. And then the summer, they're going to be replacing all the cove, of the cove wall bases throughout the hallways. So that's why the hallways. And then in both buildings, that's at Rid Street. There's other things about the high school, but I think we're talking about Rid Street. And then the school said in both buildings, classroom furniture is going to be temporarily relocated while they do that in all the hallways. And then when they're clean, so they can then clean and refurbish, do the flooring on the floors. So that's the response we received. They did say that maybe in the future they could consider, uh, you know, but this particular summer, uh, for our request to hold the camp there, uh, or to consider holding the camp there, that was the response we received. You know, we, we respect the school as well, of course, you know, they have their other operational issues. But the, the village isn't against using the school if we can find it, uh, as a good long-term arrangement for us. Uh, we don't want to turn our back on Crawford because we've had a long relationship there. We don't want to lose that space either, you know, and lose it to another group that could go there. So that's the balance we're looking at, but we're always open to areas where we can improve our programs and meet the needs.
And I would, and just to add to that, you know, we're certainly, you know, while I said we're not looking to make any material changes for twenty twenty-five, we are certainly open to continuing this conversation. And we will be meeting further with the school and the school's representatives, you know, formally and informally and through staff, through, through board, we, we absolutely will continue this conversation. We're obviously open to, you know, any suggestions. We're, we're very much open to, um, what may be possible to, to make this the best camp possible. Um, right now, it's, you know, December tenth of twenty twenty-four, we're about to head into a lot of holiday season and breaks and everything. You know, we just don't see this as a possibility and, and certainly we know it's not a possibility uh, for twenty twenty-five. But again, we're, we're certainly going to continue the conversation.
Right. And I think that, um, it's fair to share at this point that we would like to have some sort of committee and those that want to take part in it, we very much would appreciate it and love it to, uh, have a conversation going forward.
Yeah, absolutely. And we'll talk about that in a little bit.
So, um, please, okay, sorry.
Yeah. No, no, no worries. No, no, good. It's good.
Because it's part of what you're saying.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, I think Stephen Malkson is left. Uh, Carol LaBelle? Uh, Fred Kar, Megan, Zino?
I'm, we're new to the community.
Uh, if you could please, if you could please.
I don't have anything to say. I just want them here to learn.
Oh, okay. Wonderful. Oh, thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome, yeah. Welcome. And that's basically the end of my list here. I don't know if either of you, you came after the sign if you'd like to say something? Welcome back.
Yeah, I obviously remember the last time I was talking about actually the heat and also about safety. So for heat, I want to mention, yes, I understand this year it's not going to happen. And my understanding also was that Crawford Mansion is not available. So what is the contingency plan for the heat? Because my concern, this summer, this July twenty twenty-four, it was average daily temperature around eighty-four Fahrenheit. If it's ninety, that's already really bad influence on, on the health. And children, they have immature thermoregulation. So they cannot regulate themselves as good as adults, but also they just don't feel the heat as adults do. So damage is happening, but they still continue running around. So we are basically risking children with high temperatures. And it's what I looked at the weather channels, it's projected that it's probably going to be still eighty-four, eighty-five, uh, average temperature in July. So what is the contingency plan for the heat? What is the contingency plan for all-day long rain? Uh, that's my question, how it's going to be handled? Because saying that, okay, my kid survived the past years, okay, my kid also, my elder child wasn't a camp, he survived, but did I want him to survive this or I wanted him to enjoy it? So yes, they like the program, they love Rock of Runners, they love all the stuff. There's no question about that. Uh, stuff itself does the efficient job, that's great, but there's still various questions about the weather, about, and about safety as well. Yes, I know nothing has happened, but who says that it's not going to happen? And my other question, is there any risk assessment was done on safety? Because that's probably my professional information, I have to, uh, do risk assessment for my job. So everywhere I look, like, was it assessed for risk? How are we going to mitigate that risk? So that's questions I have, and I'd like to have some answers. If I have to send my child and my younger child, she's actually special needs, and that's what also was discussed, how this child can receive her services? And from what I see now, if it's still going to stay at the Crawford Park with no access to building, which we see with, uh, uh, this possibility that some strangers can come around and he'll be in special need, I don't think I can allow myself as a parent to send him there this year. So, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else?
Um, I just want to say thank you to you guys and to Bert, and for a long time for trying. I, I was under the impression when I'd reach out to the school or work, they said that they would consider it and that they would look into it. And then they told you guys, no. So I apologize because I, I thought they were going to consider it. So I apologize kind of for wasting your time because I thought the school was going to consider it. And, um, I'm sad they're not, to be honest, it didn't work there. I think the bigger discussion that we have a committee and everything is that we didn't want the whole building. Like, I'm very, I still am confused, right? Like, so when I go into Harrison L M K when I was there last summer and I went for taco in summer, we don't use the whole building. And there's no way the custodians are cleaning like every room and every time. So like, I was just talking literally six rooms by where my classes were, like the wing where the nurse's office, like, and three of those rooms are empty actually, they're not classrooms right now. So I think there needs more discussion, maybe not, maybe it's totally down in the water for years to come, of like sharing the space, you know, and also the middle of high school. Like, I thought there was a camp at the middle of high school, a different camp, maybe. I'm wrong, but I, I really hope, I know you guys were so kind to give the schools the, um, fields when the schools' fields were shut down and all these other things. So I really want to be hopeful that we can work together like other municipalities and find a way to run this in the future. Again, this is not a whole building that we're asking for. Um, it's literally a couple of classrooms. Um, I'm sad that it didn't work out and I appreciate you guys for trying and for really being open. So, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, and, you know, to that point, you know, again, we're just trying to have conversation. We're trying to open up as many possibilities as, as we can. Um, you know, we certainly understand the, um, approach that the school is taking. Uh, we appreciate them being open to conversation with us. Um, you know, I'm not going to speculate on what they may do in the future. That's certainly not our decision, um, or is in our, you know, our, our purview here.
I will say, you know, we're open to options, that's for sure. There's alternatives, options, weather, you know, we were able to work out last year and go there one day. Maybe there's openings for stuff, stuff like that and weather, certain weather. Um, you mentioned the high school, that, that was probably the travel camp at our Harkness Park, which is part of the, the village's facility, but the travel camp goes to Harkness Park where the tennis courts are. Um, that's probably when you said the high school, we had a camp at the high school. That was probably what you saw was our travel camp. When they're not traveling, they stay at Harkness Park.
All right. So I, I do want to open this up to board comment. I know, um, before I do, I just want to bring something up that we had discussed as a board, um, that I just want to put out there again. No. Uh, that I want to put out there again, that we, we had discussed the possibility of forming a subcommittee of the, of the Recreation Advisory Council, Council Committee?
Parks and Rec, uh, Parks and Rec Advisory Council.
Thank you. Um, a, a subcommittee of the Parks and Rec Advisory Council to, to look at this, to look at camp. Um, I think, you know, right now, you know, we have a resolution before us to, to, you know, look at the fees. Um, we're certainly under no emergency to do so, to, to come to a decision. Um, this is not something we want to rush. This is something we really want to consider. Um, for the public's knowledge, and this was discussed at the last, uh, the last board meeting, we do run these camps at about a fifty thousand dollar deficit.
Total between the two, yeah.
Between the two. Um, as one person brought up, and I think it was Dan, as someone brought up, um, you know, that this is subsidizing in two ways, that we're trying to keep an affordable camp uh, for village residents, and at the same time, we're also employing village youth at this camp. That, you know, this is, um, high school kids, um, and some older that we're employing at this camp. So it's, it's, um, kind of seeing a way through from day camp, travel camp, to becoming counselors and being involved in your community. In fact, our retired police chief, um, who just recently retired, uh, was a, was a camp counselor and.
His first job.
And that was his first job.
He was my counselor.
It was Bert's counselor.
So how was he?
Isn't that funny?
Was he strict?
No.
Oh. But, um, you know, and, and so, you know, we want to, we want to continue this program. We want this program to excel, continue to excel and, and do as, as best as it can for the residents of Rybrook in, in many different ways. And so I think, you know, in order to kind of work this through and see, we have to look at, you know, the fee structures and are they appropriate? Uh, we have information on where we stand with other municipalities, but how does it truly compare? You know, are there ways to reduce costs, uh, you know, maybe through busing? Are there ways to increase fees to, you know, is it, is it even something we want to do though? Do we want to, um, make it closer to breaking even? Do we, are we comfortable with this, uh, running at the deficit that it runs at currently? And, and that's more of a policy decision, uh, but it wouldn't hurt us to get as much information as we possibly can. And I think one of the ways that we feel we can do that is through a, a smaller subcommittee, looking specifically at camp, maybe bringing in some interested parties, uh, from the public, bringing in maybe may, having some focus groups, um, to kind of work this through and see really what the residents are looking for, um, in general. So I'm, I'm certainly open to comments from the board on, and any of these issues, whether it be the subcommittee or whether it be the fees themselves. Um, certainly I want to hear from the board. Um, I don't, I, I personally don't see us passing any resolution on the fee structure tonight. Um, but, but, um, let's, let's discuss this.
Sure.
When was the last time the fees went up?
Twenty-three, I think it was, right? I have it on the, uh, resolution.
He asked me what the percentage, uh, increase was.
Were we thinking of?
I'll tell you that tomorrow.
He just asked that now, I didn't ask that. It's, it's not really relevant. I mean, it is relevant to see the progression, but we have not taken a deep dive into this kind of camp exploration for a very long time. And once I did ask for this data, because, um, this is the time to do it, because we have the time, because camp, you're, when do you think about signing up for camp? I guess is my question.
Now.
Now.
Now. So what would your decision be based on? Is it, um, where it is? Is it the cost? Is it?
Cost and.
So there, and, and we want it to be a thriving program. Do you, so the reason why we would like to have this subcommittee and really do it relatively quickly if we could, because obviously this is an issue if they're thinking about it now. Um, what would make it thrive? Could it be better? Um, we do send out surveys, Bert forwarded those to us. I think that's in the backup data. Not everybody takes the survey, so again, you're looking at a small subset. So we really would like to, um, flesh this out. So, um, since you're in this room, you are interested parties. Do you think you have other people that would want to be interested in being on this, um, subcommittee? And how, how quickly do you think one could meet?
So I think some of this, you know, we have to, we have to discuss.
Sure, I just want to get a gauge.
I think, I think the, the way we're going to start with this, I think is really, first off, I think we need to have a member of our board volunteer to be the liaison to this committee. I think we have a volunteer.
You do. I've been working really, really hard on this and, um.
And, and then, so I would ask Chris that, um, that staff work with, uh, Suz, with trustee Epstein to form this subcommittee.
With the rec council, yeah.
With the involvement of the rec committee, of the rec council.
I have her number.
You have to get that name straight.
I do.
And spell it right this time.
And, and so I would ask that the chair of the rec council work with staff and with trustee Epstein to form this committee, probably sooner rather than later. Hopefully we can start to work through some of these issues to, again, provide a recommendation.
Back to the board.
Back to the board. That this, this decision ultimately lies with this board, um, but we're looking for recommendations on, on fee structure, um, from, from that subcommittee.
Fee structure only or other items as well, like?
Other items as well.
Program changes too.
Other items as well, choice.
Is that for, the fee structure I understand for twenty twenty-five, but the other ideas, I assume that the committee would be looking?
They will discuss other ideas as well, looking forward beyond twenty-five. I think, I think, you know, right now, the most immediate need is the fee structure so that we're able to advertise it.
Sure. And then, and then improvements to the program because we certainly have time to.
Right.
Flesh that out with the rec department. I think that that is an important component of camp and what your expectation is.
All right. So we have a suggestion to have two rec, two members of the rec council, two members of the village board.
And maybe two users of the program.
And a few users of the program.
Sure.
So I'll, I'll volunteer to be the second person.
Is that a conflict of interest?
No.
I just have to be. I, I was just going to say for all you economics majors, from my perspective, it's all about the elasticity of demand. It's a question of what happens to the demand for camp as prices go up? Is it elastic or is it inelastic? Inelastic means it's not price sensitive. People will go no matter what you charge. If it's elastic and you start losing people because the price has gone up, you've accomplished almost nothing because you're still going to have a subsidy, but it's going to be for even fewer people.
I think you make a very valid point, but I think that, um, once they look at the materials and they see where Rybrook falls and how much we're losing, et cetera, that that should be part of the discussion.
Well, that would be affect the elasticity of it.
Exactly.
And, and all of this will be part of the discussion. Um, and I, and I think it's an important discussion to have. Obviously, we, we are all of the same thought that we want our, our village camps to be as good as they possibly can. And we want to look at, you know, we're open to any discussion. We want to look at all aspects to try and make it so.
And, and there's no secret, one of the biggest costs that we have that's really climbed in recent years is busing. Uh, that's not a Rybrook issue, that's a, an everywhere issue. Not to, you know, so trying to find drivers, these bus companies have gone, a lot of companies have gone out of the, even out of the business of doing charter busing. Um, you still can get some quotes for school buses, but we can't even get people to bid on the charter busing. And it's very difficult. And that brings other issues. So that's certainly one topic of many to talk about on, because that'll affect what that'll affect what programs you go to, distances you go to, all of the above.
Great. Do we have any other comments from the board?
No, but I would suggest everybody, the backup data is online.
Yes, it's available.
Yes, everything is.
So if you can peruse that, I would be grateful.
Great. All right, so at this point, we're not taking any action.
I'll follow up tomorrow to connect everybody and come up with a group.
At this point, we're not taking any action on anything. We'll leave it to staff and others to arrange. All right. Thank you all for coming. You're not, you're not staying to hear about manhole covers and sewer, sewer cleaning and replacements?
We have our own sewers.
Dan's like been there, done that. Judy? We should get that person on our committee.
All right, so moving on to resolution number three, considering awarding contract number 2414, cleaning televising manhole rehabilitation inspection cured in place pipelining.
What fun.
I'm very excited, doesn't it?
Manhole rehabilitation.
Whereas the village of Rybrook has solicited bids for contract 24-12, as the mayor described, and whereas the public notice was advertised in the official newspaper on November 22nd, and at 10:00 AM on December 6th, all bids were opened and summarized below. We received three bids, one from Arold Construction, another from InstaForm Technologies, another from National Water Main Cleaning Company, and the total bid prices for the lowest bid was 827,170. There was another bid for 949,000, and another one for 1.3, 1,341,675. And then there was three alternates, four alternates, sorry, with the prices that are listed in the resolution. Now therefore be resolved that following review of the bids by the village administrator and superintendent of Public Works, the Board of Trustees determine the lowest responsible bidder meeting the requirements of the contract is InstaForm Technologies of 580 Goddard Avenue in Chesterfield, Missouri, for the base price of 827,170 plus alternates 1 through 4. And be it further resolved that the contract may be renewed at a later date for an additional two years with mutual agreement of the village and the contractor. Be it further resolved, the mayor and administrator are authorized to execute and deliver all documents necessary or appropriate to accomplish the purposes of the resolution.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion second, please?
So moved.
Okay. Surprisingly, there's, I mean, there's a difference in pricing, but it's not as...
A 50% difference.
50% difference. It's not like a 10, it's not a 300% difference.
I say the same thing all the time, and it makes me crazy. I wonder if these people are bidding on the same contract.
And if you look at the line items in the contract, it's very interesting to see the differences in line items. I will say, and I don't want to lose the best part of the message here, we received a grant for 959,000 and change towards the cost of this work. So that's wonderful.
Which is phenomenal, and we're, we're very happy to have that. And again, this is a grant that allows us to move forward with this project and to improve infrastructure in the village, which is huge. So, any questions or comments?
No. Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Hyzer?
Yes.
Trustee Morino?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein.
Yes, thank you. Resolution number four, considering supporting the issuance of a RFP, a request for proposal for a joint traffic study with the Portchester School District.
Thank you for clearing, cleaning up the heading.
Yeah.
Whereas Rybrook has engaged in discussions with the Portchester School District regarding vehicular and pedestrian safety concerns in and around the Portchester Middle School and High School, and whereas solutions to these vehicular and pedestrian safety concerns may involve both the village of Rybrook and the Portchester School District, and whereas Rybrook and Portchester School District have discussed potentially conducting a joint traffic study to develop recommended solutions to these vehicular and pedestrian safety concerns with the intent that the cost for such study would be split equally between the village and the school district, and whereas the administrator has prepared a joint RFP, a request for proposal for potential, potential traffic study to be sent to firms interested in performing the traffic study, and be it further resolved that the Rybrook Board of Trustees hereby supports issuing an RFP for a joint traffic study with the Portchester School District with the intent that the cost for such study would be equally split between the village and the school district.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
Motion.
Before I get into a little more information on this, Michael, you missed, you missed the...
Manhole.
Manhole cover and the lining, the pipelining. We proved it, you should...
Very exciting.
But it was very exciting stuff. That was more your, your speed. Just to, you know, a little bit of background here, and then I'm going to turn it to Chris for more background, but, you know, we're having these conversations from the previous conversation about camp, about, you know, Ridge Street School. It's important to note that there's more than one school district in the village of Rybrook.
Ooh, that's a point.
And that the Portchester, that one-third of the village, approximately...
And the two biggest buildings.
Attends the Portchester Schools, and the two largest buildings, right?
Of the school district.
The Portchester Middle School and the Portchester High School are both in the village of Rybrook proper. And so when we're talking about this, it's important to know that the, the middle school and high school where we're talking about this traffic study is in the village of Rybrook. This isn't something that we're looking at in Portchester, this is in Rybrook. So, and Chris, if you want to add some background about the conversations that we've had.
Yeah, absolutely. And this is conversations that have involved the, the police department, my office, the mayor's been involved in some of the discussions, as well as the Portchester School Board and their administrative staff, and they're, basically, there's, there's, we all know that there's been a long history of traffic disruptions and pedestrian disruption issues around the schools, particularly the middle school. You know, there's a lot of, a lot of kids leaving in a lot of, in a short, in a small amount of space. It impacts the shopping center, it impacts the village in terms of traffic, some of it's also commuting time. It's a very difficult situation, and it really is overdue for something really to look at a joint study, because some of the solutions may be infrastructure, some of the solutions could be school, school within their, within their property, or maybe dismissal changes, things like that, with staggered, more staggering. You know, we have smart signals out there, we have sidewalks with limited space, but also limited property, to put it. We have a comprehensive plan that also talks about improvements in that area that is out there, that also the school is impacted by as well. So it's definitely, and the, the high school has other difficulties as well. So the school has, is very interested in this as well. They called for the meeting initially, and we said, let's, we suggested that it would be a good idea to do a joint study, both of the traffic and the pedestrian flows, to see how we can make improvements for the long term. This is a really key part of the village, impacts the residents, impacts the community, impacts our business area, impacts the school. And if there's better ways to do it, you know, I think it makes sense to do this. And I did a similar study in, years ago, not in Rybrook, and where we came up with some really out of the box alternatives. There was a series, school by school review in that, in that municipality, and improvements were made from programs to infrastructure, things were recommended and implemented over time. The first step is, we're not asking for any commitment of funds right now. What we're asking for is the board to agree to send an RFP out, have a committee that would, with representatives of the school and the village, and review any responses to the RFP to see if there's, at a reasonable cost, if we were able to do a joint traffic study that both, that would benefit both the school and the village. And then we can make a decision, there'd be another decision whether or not to move forward. If the study comes up at outrageous cost, then maybe we go for a grant to do the study. You know, there's things that we'll look at. If it's a reasonable cost, we don't need a grant, then maybe we proceed without that. But the first step is, let's flush it out through an RFP and get responses back, and then we see if this is a next step that both the school and the village would like to take. We've been engaged with the school from discussions, the school is going to be considering a similar resolution that they're meeting in about a week.
Do you envision that the village and the Portchester School District will be paying 50/50?
On the study.
Yeah, on the study.
On the study, yes.
Okay.
100%. And, and because there's overlap on both, you know, there's impacts that, I also envision that the traffic, a consultant, because they're going to be looking at the school, they're going to be looking at the village, going to look at our infrastructure, but they're also going to be looking at what are their dismissal times? What are their, how many kids are leaving? How many, could we do that different? Could we divide out the kids in different, whether it be Westchester Ave or Bowman Ave? Is there other locations that the kids could leave from? And all that impacts our residents and people that are visiting the village in the streets and the sidewalks and the shopping center. We've had two pedestrian issues, incidents, and not at regular crossings, but there's been two vehicular, two cars that have, have hit children in the last, in the last year and a half, I think it's been. Hasn't, luckily, hasn't been, you know, I don't believe any of them were overly serious, but we need to, but there is incidents, and this is the type of thing, if we can do something to avoid it, this is a way to, to work towards a safer environment.
I have a quick clarification. It says high school, not middle school.
It's both. There's, we're looking...
That is not clear on here.
No, what we did in the RFP...
Yeah.
Is the RFP is drafted as, so to be for the middle school, and then getting alternate price for the high school. The school is very interested in doing a similar thing around the high school.
So I just saw high school.
Do you mean in the resolution or the RFP?
The draft RFP anticipates that we're going to get an, we'll get an additional price for the high school, so that would be carved out, one or the other, or both.
Okay, so it is. Okay, fine. That was not clear, I'm sorry. I misread it.
Any other questions or comments on this?
No, I think it's a good idea. I think the traffic is horrendous in the morning.
It says here, over here, it says background, this is Portchester High School. I didn't read the...
Oh, the background, that's just a mistake.
I didn't read the resolution, I'm sorry. Leave that to David.
Sorry, it's high school.
If we're going to comment on spelling and things like that.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, there was something.
He catches everything.
That's why it says draft.
I think it's a step in the right direction.
You can send that, you can send your edits to Chris.
I think we're, let's see how it goes and play it out.
No, I, I totally understand about the middle school much more. I'm so sorry, I just didn't understand.
No, Mike, that's our error, so we apologize. The background had, should have said both.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I can't see it, but go ahead.
All right. I think...
Arriva.
I know I'm certainly in, I know I'm certainly...
It's not already, David. On my version, I fixed it.
Susan counts on refining this thing.
I do.
I know I'm certainly in favor of, you know, at least looking into the possibility of getting this study done. And again, we'll, I'm assuming we'll approve it tonight, and I believe the school board, the Portchester School Board's meeting on the 19th. And then we'll look for them to hopefully be approving it.
And then we're going to be looking for two volunteers on the board to serve on a group to interview.
To review.
Interview the proposals and perhaps be part of a committee working with the consultant.
We don't have to decide that tonight, we'll get to that.
You do not.
We'll get to that.
Food for thought.
Let's, let's first make sure that this is getting approved and moving forward, and then we'll go from there.
Okay.
All right, Greg.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Hyzer?
Yes.
Trustee Morino?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein.
Yes, thank you. Resolution, oh, I lost track of numbers again. Resolution number five, considering accepting a stock donation for the AJP Senior Center and authorizing the sale of such donated stock and placement of the proceeds into a special purpose trust account.
Okay. Whereas Melvin Klugman of 4D-B Avon Circle, Rybrook wishes to donate 150 shares of NVDA stock, having approximate value of $20,000 to the village of Rybrook for the Anthony J. Pacilipus Senior Center, and whereas Rybrook is interested in accepting the donation of stocks with the express understanding that Rybrook will be placing the stock into its brokerage account in order to receive said donation and promptly, promptly liquidating such donated stocks. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees accepts the donation of 150 shares having of NVDA stock having an approximate value of $20,000 from Melvin Klugman to the village of Rybrook to be used for the benefit of the Senior Center. Be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees authorizes and approves the prompt sale of such donated stocks once owned by the village of Rybrook, and authorizes the proceeds of such sale to be placed into a special purpose trust account to be called the Senior Center Trust, the funds of which are to be used for the benefit of the Anthony J. Pacilipus Senior Center. And be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the placement of this stock into its brokerage account with TD Bank for the limited purposes of selling all such donated stocks once owned by the village, I'm sorry, once owned by the village at a cost not to exceed $500 to be deducted from the proceeds of such sale, and with such account to continue to remain open only for the purpose of receiving and promptly liquidating any future stock donations for a length of time determined by the treasurer and administrator. Be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the mayor, village administrator and treasurer to take all actions and to sign any and all documents necessary to implement the purposes of this resolution.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
Second.
A couple of quick things here. First of all, I just want to say thank you to Mr. Klugman for this donation. It's not the first donation that he has made, and we are extremely appreciative of this, and we promise that it will go towards very good things at AJP. For those in the public wondering why we're immediately selling the stock, the village is prohibited from owning stock, and so that is why when we receive donations of this type, it has to be immediately sold.
Liquidated, yep.
Immediately liquidated. Chris, anything else you want to add?
No, that's, you said it all. And we have a special account we set up the last time for this purpose.
Is Mr. Klugman a frequent visitor of the Pacilipus?
Excuse me?
It's...
Oh, yeah, he's a, he's a, he's a senior, a senior member.
Sure, we must be doing a good job there.
Yeah?
That's good. Thank you.
But it's very generous of him, for sure. I really appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Klugman.
Klugman, thank you.
Yes, we appreciate it.
I think we should meet him one day.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes, and thank you.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Hyzer?
Yes.
Trustee Morino?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein.
Yes, thank you. Resolution number six, considering fiscal year 2425 budget modifications for American Res, for ARPA funds.
Much easier. Now therefore be resolved that fiscal year 2025, 2425 general fund be modified to reflect a budget adjustment to record the American Rescue Plan Act funds received and transferred to the Capital Project Fund as follows, and as a transfer of an increase in revenues of 145,446 and an increase in appropriations of the same amount.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
Motion.
Second.
Chris, a little background?
Sure, yeah, we have to make sure all the funds are allocated for the ARPA funds before the end of this year, and the reason that number jumped from the resolution last week is there's just another project ready to go, and that's the sanitary, the sewers that we have, that we, the board had already allocated. All this has already been approved by the board from a funding perspective and allocation of ARPA funds, but what this is doing is satisfying the auditors that it's placed in the appropriate accounts for that purpose, to record the ARPA. That's how they want it recorded. We list them into capital, and we list it as our capital fund, and then this basically changes it into the way, we do that to highlight and earmark it, and then this is where it gets transferred for the, for the use of the funds and for recording purposes for the audit.
Great, thank you, Chris. Any questions or comments?
Nope.
No.
Again, this is something that's helping keep our books clean, which is what we really like, and make sure that should funds like this become available in the future, we're able to receive them.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Hyzer?
Yes.
Trustee Morino?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein.
Yes, thank you. Resolution number seven, considering the approval of the minutes for the meetings held on May 28th, June 11th, and June 25th, 2024.
Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees approves the minutes for the meetings held on May 28th, June 11th, and June 25th, 2024.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Administrator's report.
Just have a few items. One is, I just want to say, great job to the Rec Department, Parks and Rec, and Public Works for really putting on another great Winter Fest. Turnout wasn't as strong as we've had in other years, but the weather was quite cold, and there were some other events.
Quite cold.
But from the setup and the operation of it, I thought they did just a great job. You know, it was really another nice event, another public gathering, and that's what it's all about. Even in the winter and the cold, we still bring people together from the community and celebrate being in Rybrook. Leaf program, we're pretty close to the end, we're almost done. If you look, there's not many leaves out there. After this week, we'll only have one truck on for till about December 16th, I think. And that's what we tell the residents, it's over on the 16th as per code, but we will continue for any loose piles that are out there to the end of the year. But we do try to say December 16th, the end of the, the official end of the program. Okay? Veolia, want to talk about that a little bit. We're getting, for the last week or so, about last week, we've been getting a lot of calls from residents very concerned about cloudy water in their, from the pipes, coming from their pipes into their homes. And we're, we're concerned about that as well, and we've been in touch with Veolia and encourage residents to call directly as well to keep reporting it. But the, this is an area that's affect, seems to be affecting more the northern parts, north of Betsy Brown of the village, but particularly in the Country Ridge area, but other areas as well. Veolia is aware of it, and the first reaction was that they thought there might be a water main break somewhere that they were trying to find, that hasn't popped up out of the ground, and they thought that might have been the source. But now they still have not found the source of it, and they're, what they're doing is they're opening up all the hydrants throughout the village to try to flush whatever it is in the system, to try to get that flushed out. I don't have much more information at this point. You know, we can put stuff on our website as it becomes available, or push it out through the resident email blast, but they are aware of it, they're trying to search out the problem, and they are flushing hydrants, hoping that that will clean, you know, flush the system as well. In terms of the safety of the water, I don't have any information on that, so I couldn't comment on that, but as we get information, we'll make that available as well to the residents.
The question I've been getting from residents is, is there any way the village could test the safety of the water?
No, we wouldn't have that ability, no.
Because they're, they're very frustrated.
Yeah.
They understand that maybe it's a slow process, but they'd like some communication from Veolia as to whether the water is safe, and when they call, they don't get calls back.
That's why, I, what I, we could do is, we'll do our best to get the information and put it out to the residents, and maybe get a statement from Veolia about that directly. Michael, do you have any else you could add to that? Okay.
We're still here.
Harrison is having some problems still.
Yeah?
Yeah, I know for a fact, yeah. So it's a-
It's unusual, though. This is an unusual situation. You don't see this kind of not knowing what it is right now, and that's, that's disturbing, you know, that we don't know that.
Oh, you can't help.
Hopefully.
Let's go.
Yeah. Here he goes.
There he goes. Still in short sleeves, by the way, right?
I'm going to be, because I'm going to get asked really tough questions.
Like it's hot?
In, in speaking with Veolia, initially it was thought that there was a water main break somewhere that might have caused the discoloration, which is not untypical. The other source potential is unlicensed tapping of hydrants. So when someone opens a hydrant and they don't get permission, they open it too quickly, there's a surge, you stir up all the sediment in the pipes, that's always a possibility. There have been crews in the village searching, they have three trucks in the village today doing a flushing and reconnaissance, but nothing has materialized as far as what may have caused this. The fact that Harrison may be having issue, or someone else may be having an issue, it's the first I'm hearing of that. But we've tried to reach out to our contacts, we have a field supervisor who we're speaking with, we've reached out to a manager, a regional manager, he may be away on vacation, so we're waiting to hear back from him, but we're trying to get as much answers as we can as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, and hopefully they figure it out and resolve it soon.
Yes.
Well, it seems to have gotten worse. That's what's so frustrating.
Right. The flushing did not help.
No.
Well, we'll see.
The water has gone from mildly discolored to profoundly discolored.
I wish we had better answers, but we're kind of at the will of getting those answers from Veolia. But as we get it, and we're going to keep being persistent, you know, we'll share that out with the residents as we get any information.
Thank you, Chris. And yeah, absolutely, any information we can get out would be greatly appreciated. All right, on new business, we have an update on the food cycler kits.
Okay, we just-
For those of you who were at Winter Fest, you saw that there was a table with these food cyclers there, being, being shown, not demonstrated, and I would, and I would agree with what you said, Chris, it was a very cold night.
It was.
And certainly, I want to say thank you to all of the staff that was present there for that, to get that done, because it was not easy, so. All right, food cyclers.
Okay, so the food cyclers, again, this is a grant that the village received, the board has approved the funding for our contribution, which is very minimal, but it's a great opportunity for, to get these in-home food waste diversion kits. This is a kit, two different models that are available to the residents to put in your homes, and most often, I guess this is really meant for your kitchen, where people could take certain types of food and put it into the food cycler, and that will then get processed in a very short period of time. It's not compost, it's a product that you can mix with compost, or mix with, with soil and put in your gardens, but compost takes a long time to decompose, and there's benefits of having compost, but what this does is, does it, in a much shorter period of time, it'll, it'll take the, it'll turn, make it into a different type of waste that can be added to compost and disposed of. It's a great way to get kitchen waste out of the garbage stream, which does cost the village money, and goes to other locations that have to be disposed of, so this is a great way to, you know, help the environment, and it's an opportunity to buy these kits at a, at a greatly reduced price. And I'll let Mr. Rivera kind of go through a little bit about the program.
Thank you, Administrator Bradbury. And as the administrator said, though, too, this will help again greatly reduce the carbon footprint that also we put out. So, in order to make this grant the reality, we have, we're doing as a pilot program, and our, we're legally for the New York State, get the public funds laws that we have to kind of get around that. So this one I'll show you, here you go, you also have a copy in front of you, but this is all strictly from my website right here. So I'm not going to go through it exactly like link by link, but just to kind of go through it briefly. Also, if you guys have any questions, also for the public, so you guys can see for themselves, and you guys can also look through it at your leisure.
And all this information's on our website.
Correct, yes, exactly. All of this on our website, and just talk a brief lip, a bit about it. And then there is 100 kits are available. Again, there's 50 of each model, one model's the Eco 3 and the Eco 5, and the model basically for you is based on how many people you have living within your residence. So again, if you have fewer people living, then the Eco 3 is probably a better fit. If you have more than the Eco 5, I know, Trusty Marino, you bought the Eco 5 based on the fact that you have five people residing, and Trusty Epstein, I know you would like one too, as well. Now, again, if it's just you and your husband living there, maybe the Eco 3 might be a better fit, but again, everyone can decide for themselves.
I cook all the time.
Again, every, it's the best fit for you, but again, it's the Eco 3, as it go on the website, it's designed for fewer people living there. But as the administrator said, again, it's a greatly reduced price, these are great kits, they're, again, from the company's Food Cycle Science from Canada, but however unfortunately, they're not inexpensive kits, and as you can see within the sheet, they are about $500, $600 apiece. So, and we're getting them at greatly reduced rates of $65 and $75 respectively. That doesn't include the shipping cost, but even with that being said, this is an excellent deal that we're getting. Again, this is on the website, and I'm just going to go through it briefly.
So as you can see, the greatly reduced prices, the $500 model is available for $65, and the $600 model is available for $75, plus of course the shipping. Residents can order these items online, the village, and then they will send it directly to your home. So you don't come to Village Hall for this, you do it directly through the website, and you get it directly shipped to your home. Again, it's a pilot program, and the purpose is to divert food waste from the, from the waste stream.
Correct, exactly. And it's part of the pilot program, I just want everyone to be aware, though, that they are asking the company, that's Food Cycle Science from Canada, that you track, if you're going to buy one, that for about 12 weeks, as it says on the website, you just usually track your progress. After 12 weeks, then you could stop it. That is one of the stipulations that if you, anybody here or who's watching is interested in purchasing one of these kits.
What does it mean to track?
Yeah, they say the village will provide information.
Yep, it's on the website, and Grace is going to show it to you.
I'll show you the form exactly which outlines it all. It'll be much easier just if you guys see it than me trying to explain it that way.
And can these machines be kept indoors?
Yes, yes. And actually, you want, you want to keep it in an environment where, again, it's not really exposed to the elements, so it's designed to be like plugged in, like overnight, like in your kitchen. So that's what it's really designed for.
How long does it take to get to the soil part?
Couple hours, yeah.
Six to eight hours, it said. And it's not, and, and it's not necessarily making it into soil, necessarily, it's something that could be added to the compost. Certainly, this is something that, again, is another way that we're trying to further reduce the food waste, making its way into the waste cycle in Rybrook. We have a municipal compost program ongoing, and it certainly isn't meant to detract from that, but, you know, this seemed like a good opportunity, and so we wanted to participate in this. As a quick question, how, how else, aside from being on the website, how else are we disseminating, disseminating this information?
We have some final paperwork we're working out with the state, and as soon as we get the green light from the state, then we'll be pushing this out through emails, social media, all the above. So, you know, we're going to be pushing this out pretty hard to the residents, so that they're available and when they're available. They actually are available now on our website, but we're just waiting for final paperwork from the state to be resolved.
And as a quick question, once those 100 are gone, is that it for the program?
That's it, yes. And also, the, most of the funding is coming from the New York State DEC, will provide the bulk of the grant funding. Now, the village, we have to provide a part of the matching cost, and then the rest is covered with the price as-
I think the village is, what, $3,000 and change or something?
It's not much, but-
And the reason is, we're diverting the waste from the stream.
Right. And, all right, so I guess the moral of the story is, if you want one of these, act fast, once we start disseminating the information, or now, if you're watching this, because this is a limited time program-
You can run it.
-with a limited amount.
You can run it.
Greg, if I remember what you were saying on Friday night, this in essence is like a supercharged dehydrator?
Yeah, essentially, yes.
Just show the video real quick. It's a one-minute video.
And how do you know which one to get?
It's worth looking.
Based on the size you need, really?
Based on how you would have. If you're someone that has like eight people living with you, then the Eco 5 is likely a better fit.
Okay.
Or if it's just like two people in the residence, then probably the Eco 3.
Just how much kitchen space you want to take up.
Yeah, and it also depends on how much food you cook, so there's other variables that go into it.
Mm-hmm.
Point one.
And just the videos you have set up. Again, I'm not going to go through all of them, but I'll just play just a couple of them.
Just one, just do the one.
So just do, this one, because it's the one right in front. So everybody gets an idea of kind of how these things work.
Follow the directions.
That's the big one, small one.
At least by watching it, you can give a look. That's right. If you can't get the sound going, it's okay.
It's fine, yeah.
And I may regret getting the big one. Seems like, where's it going?
Which color should I get?
There's two different colors, there's a black one and a white one, I believe, right?
Yes.
Maybe I'll get a white one.
Yeah.